Six o'clock, all the order. Vice Chairman Frank Daniel, let us stand for the invitation. Oh, eyes and everlasting Father, we come again at this appointed hour. Heavenly Father, we, we thank you for bringing us through this day. And Father, we just pray for uplifting and our decision making here tonight for the betterment of Saluda County. We pray in acts of all in Jesus Christ, amen. Let's do our pledge allegiance to the flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for October the fourteenth, twenty-eighth, and November the fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. I call for a vote. District two, I will vote yes. District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And I advise chairman vote yes. Next, we'll have a report of the county officials. District two?
No, this time.
District three? Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman. Uh, District three had a great weekend in the Richland Springs community. Last weekend, Mr. John F. Berry, excuse me y'all, and the Richland Creek Antique Power Association held their annual antique tractor pool, which was met with beautiful weather that resulted in a lot of visitors. This association provided opportunities for school field trips with the assistance from the local FFA and quality time with family while reminiscing about times past. Thank you to the Richland Creek Power Association for your hard work and efforts to keep history and heritage alive. Thank you.
District four?
District four, this time.
Well, I report for District one, we had a great weekend in wars over the weekend. Between horses and peoples well over thousands, so we had a good time in wars over the weekend. Next, we go to... I, I want to stop here and express my condolences to the family of Mr. Bill, Billy Alsford. Mr. Alsford was one of our convenience centers attendants. He was a well-rounded guy. We're, we're truly missing him. Next, we go to old business. Consideration to rescind vote on the purchase of an enclosed trailer to transport the boat machines to the precincts. Do I have a motion to rescind the vote from October the twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen call on the purchase of an enclosed trailer from the Saluda Fire Department in the amount of thirty-six hundred dollars to transport the boat machines to the precincts during election? Do I have a vote?
Motion.
Second.
Do I have a?
Oh, I cannot, I cannot make a motion on that, Mr. Vice Chairman. I apologize. I wasn't looking for the eye.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, this is just one of those situations where we kind of got the cart in front of the horse, so to speak, and the county actually already had a trailer that they can use to transport these machines. Didn't quite do all of their due diligence to find out everything that they possibly could have. But anyways, this is, this is going to be a savings for the county.
I, I agree with Mr. Councilman. We saved thirty-six hundred dollars. We have something in our back door and didn't know it. So that's the reason we rescinded it. I call for a vote. District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And I advise chairman vote yes. We'll move to new business. I will entertain a motion for the first reading of audit number zero nine nineteen and ordinance to establish a uniform service charge for motorized vehicle users off the county roads of Saluda County, South Carolina. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. I call for a vote. District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District three?
No.
District four?
Yes.
And I advise chairman vote yes. The vote is carried. Now, we're going to have a public hearing on the second reading. It would be held on December the second, two thousand and nineteen, at six o'clock. The second reading, a public hearing. You'll get a chance to, uh, to sign up. December the second, at six o'clock. Next, we'll recognize Mr. David In... Inzos? He got to undo his name.
I've lived in Columbia all my life, so...
Inzalis?
Inzostiga.
Inzostiga?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you for having me. Hi, David Inzostiga. I'm with the C K with the county of Richland, Inzostiga. Located in Lexington, South Carolina. So I'm here to go over the audit report and financial statements for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, if you turn into your financial statements, we can go over it real quick. Starting on pages three and four, this is the independent auditor's report. Uh, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we can give, meaning there weren't any modifications or problems noted with the financial statement. So it's the same opinion we've given in prior years. Um, moving on to page six, this is the statement of net position. So this is a combined balance sheet for all the finances of the county. So it's really consolidated, so it has a lot of information in there, but, uh, the, the, the fund schedules are, are better to look at, I think. Uh, starting at the top, cash was at a little over eight million. Uh, this schedule has our capital assets listed in the middle of the page. Then it also has some liabilities, liabilities that are different than other schedules. One is the net retirement benefit for retiree health insurance, and the other is the pension liability for the state of South Carolina Retirement System. So the post-retirement benefit is at four million dollars, and then the South Carolina Retirement System liability is at eleven point eight million dollars. Uh, moving on to page seven, this is the statement of activities. This is an income statement. You start in that left-hand column, you work the way to the right, and you come down. So total expenses for the county was at sixteen point eight million. Uh, this schedule includes an adjustment for the retirement system pension expense. It also includes depreciation expenses and some other reconciling items. So again, expenses are at sixteen point eight million, and then revenues were at fourteen point eight. So it was a decrease in the net position this year of two million dollars. If you go on to page nine, this is the balance sheet as well. This one shows the individual funds, so this one doesn't include the fixed assets, and it doesn't include the two liabilities I mentioned. Uh, that first column is the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the county. So the fund balance for the year ended at one point eight million dollars. Fund balance should be about two to three months' worth of operating expenses. So that would put it between two million to three million, and it's currently at one point eight million. The county does have reserves in the capital projects fund of four point seven million, but that is, that is all reserved for, for future capital projects. Uh, if you go onto page eleven, this is the budget actual for the general fund. So revenues came in with a positive variance of one point two million. Uh, expenses had a positive variance of budget of two hundred thousand. So for the year, the fund balance did decrease, two hundred and forty-two thousand, going from two million down to one point eight million. Starting on page thirteen, here's the footnotes. These are pretty standard from year to year. The ones I usually just point out is on page twenty-one. That shows the long-term debt, uh, the, the general obligation bonds outstanding for the county. So at June thirtieth, there was one bond outstanding to four hundred and sixty-five thousand. Uh, there was one for seven hundred and forty thousand that had been retired. Uh, the final payments were made. And then at the bottom of page twenty-one, you can see the debt that's maturing for the next, uh, four years. So your interest and principal is a hundred and thirty thousand a year for the next four years. On page twenty-five, I talk about the retiree health benefits. So if you see the top there, uh, the county hires an actuary to perform a, a actuarial contribu- uh, calculation to show, uh, how much these benefits will cost in the future. So the actuaries are calculating that, the, the actual cost, or the cost will be three hundred and eleven thousand. The actual contribution is only forty-five thousand dollars right now. So they're anticipating that health insurance costs will, will increase as the years go on. Uh, pages thirty-four, again, this just shows the retiree health insurance. What actuaries have calculated, starting back in June two thousand and eleven. So they estimated it to be a hundred and thirty-four thousand. Now they're estimating it to be three hundred and eleven thousand. But the actual has been far less than that. It started at twenty thousand, and the actual contribution now is at forty, forty-five thousand. Uh, page thirty-five just kind of shows the pension liability with the state retirement system. So the county participates in both just the regular state retirement system and the police officers retirement system, and that lists the two liabilities that the county is recognizing. So if you look at the top there on the second line, um, that shows the, the county's share of the pension liability. So back in two thousand and fifteen, it was at four point five million, and then now it's at eight point one million. The county's up to date on making all the contributions to the retirement system. So this is again, an actuarial, uh, calculation performed by the state to kind of show what your liability would be. And then the, the main thing from this is if you go, uh, through one of the lines down, it shows a contribution percentage for the county. So back in two thousand and fifteen, the contribution percentage was at ten point seven five. So now it's increased up to fourteen point four one. Uh, they've raised the, the contribution percentage one more percent this year. So in the current fiscal year, it's at fifteen point four percent. Uh, for police officers, the liability went from two point three up to three point seven, and then the contribution percentage has gone from thirteen percent up to fifteen point eight four percent. And if you look at the middle of the page, it shows how much the retirement systems are funded. So regular state retirement system at eighty percent, police officers at sixty-one. So in a perfect world, you'd be at a hundred percent. Probably most people would want to be around seventy-five, eighty percent. But that, that probably just means that they'll continue raising the percentages. That's, that's going to be charged to the county for the employees to, uh, take up that deficit. Pages thirty-seven, starts the details, thirty-seven through sixty. Uh, I just encourage you to look through that when you have the time. I don't have anything else to, to point out in the report. Do you have any questions for me this time?
Anyone for me, Alz? State that has been well explained to us, uh... If we have a problem, we'll call you.
Yes, sir.
Something we don't understand.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. I'll entertain a motion to accept the audit financial statement for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and nineteen as presented by Mr. Inzos. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. I call for a vote. District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And I advise chairman vote yes. Next, we'll recognize Recreation Director, Mr. Paul Ergen, for the consideration to adopt the Saluda County Recreation Complex rules and rental policy. Mr. Ergen?
How y'all doing? All right. Kind of big brief of what, what we have here. We don't have a, uh, rules and rental policy at Saluda. Uh, all surrounding counties, except for Batesville, which is Lexington County, uh, don't allow anyone to use their complex after baseball season. So, uh, what we're trying to get is, uh, we want the charge fees. Uh, we have fees set for in, in-town fees and then out-of-town fees. The use of the ball field or the park, uh, so much per hour. I won't get into that because y'all probably have that. But this money will go towards, uh, upgrading light bills, uh, any damage that we have. We have a real, real nice complex now, uh, at Saluda, and it's, uh, improving daily. And this right here will, uh, help us keep, keep the park where we want it. And, uh, travel ball is becoming a hot, hot sport here in the country. Uh, you see a lot of recreation departments, numbers dropping down during baseball. Travel ball is taking over, uh, just, we had five teams practicing August the first till just this last week using our facilities. Also with, uh, teams from out of town or different counties probably wanting to use it because we don't have fees that's free. Uh, so that's basically what we got, and, uh, I will, if you have any questions, feel free to ask me.
And, and, and basically where this is going is we have more and more teams, uh, inside the county and outside the county that are interested in using our facilities. And what you have is, is Paul can maintain these parks, um, with what he collects during the season, but then thereafter, um, wear and tear from, what would you say, June to last week? From June to last week, there's still people using the, using the fields, still using the restaurants and so forth, and, uh, we've got to have a way of offsetting the cost, the damages, whatever it may be.
And people also tend to take care of something. When you got to give a little something, they take care of it a little more instead of when it's free, and they kind of don't care, you know, what happens. So that, that's kind of going to go toward it also, of, of protecting what we're trying to build and create here with the county's recreation.
Let me just say, this, this really is in an effort to penalize anybody wanting to use the facilities, but we also have a standard that we want to maintain also, and this is going to help do that.
I, uh, I looked over your rules and your rental property policy. I, uh, I...
And, and we, we use it, uh, we base ours on all the surrounding counties. So we're, we're no higher, no lower from Abbeville to Edgefield, to Gilbert, to Lexington, and all around. So we're, we're in there, so we're not trying to, you know, hit the jackpot, so to speak. So we right in there trying to stay within remis of them.
So we may be compatible.
Yeah, well, we're real compatible.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a discussion? I call for a vote. District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And I advise chairman vote yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we'll recognize Emergency Management Director George Martin for the consideration to replace the cameras system at the American Legion Building.
Mr. Martin? Uh, basically what we have here is, uh, DVR for the system, uh, over at the American Legion Building has, has died. That DVR is about six years old, so, uh, can't be repaired, so it's going to have to be replaced. Uh, we, we got with our security company, and basically one of the things that they would offer us as an option is a, a system that will allow us to replace the entire system for less than the cost of that particular DVR that we'll be replacing. So, uh, what we're looking at is permanent install cost of four thousand, one hundred and forty dollars plus tax, uh, sales tax on us two nineteen twenty. Uh, so you're looking at forty-three fifty-nine twenty for the whole project.
Do I have a motion?
Uh-huh.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Why does it seem like we're replacing a lot of cameras lately?
Because a lot of these camera systems were put in at the same time, which means that they're all starting to sort of have issues at the same time, unfortunately.
And where all of these cameras be located?
These cameras will be in the same places that the current cameras are located.
Are there any funding, any funds available that we can pull from?
No, there's not any.
Just contingency?
Yeah. Unless there's something up over there.
It's mainly the DVRs went out, not cameras, correct?
Right.
And you just got to up, upgrade and update to that so you can...
Well, with putting in this new system, this will include new cameras. But again, the, we're switching to a different system, which is less expensive than just buying the DVR for the old system. So we're actually able to upgrade the whole thing for less money.
What's the name of this company?
Uh, this is Adroyd. This is our, our current security company.
I will entertain a motion for Artic...
Adroyd.
Art, Art, Art-Raw System Company to install the camera system at the American Legion Building in the amount of four thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents to be funded from contingency. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. I call for a vote. District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District three?
No.
District four?
Yes.
And I advise chairman vote yes. Motion carried. Next, we'll recognize Assistant Emerg- Emergency Management Director, T.O. Warren, for consideration to submit assistance to firefighter's grant application. Warren?
Uh, we are going to try once again for the assistance to firefighter grant for the radio systems, for EMS and fire departments. This will be the same radio system like the sheriff's department is using now. Uh, we put in this grant last year. We've been turned down, so we're going to try. This is a big federal grant, so we're up against every fire department in the United States, and it's very competitive. The proposal is for EMS, we would, um, have nine mobile radios and eighteen portable radios. For the fire department, thirty-six mobile radios and eighty portable radios for a total of four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred, four hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and seven cents. Uh, there would be a ten percent match requirement of forty thousand, thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. And since we had just recently put in for this, we'll put in for this grant last year and just recently received the turn down notice, there was thirty-four thousand dollars that had been set aside to match the grant last year. So proposing to take that thirty-four thousand dollars and add an additional six thousand, thirty-five dollars and fifty cents to come up with the forty thousand, thirty-five fees that we need. That way, all you're having to approve tonight would be six thousand, thirty-five dollars and fifty cents.
I'd like to entertain a motion for the assistant.
Yeah, get there.
I'd like to entertain a motion for the Assistant Emergency Management Director to proceed with the assistance to firefighter's grant application to purchase thirty-six P-two R compliant mobile radios and eighty P-twenty-five compliance portable radios for the seven fire departments, and eighteen P-twenty-five compliance portable radios, and nine P-twenty-five compliance radios for EMS for a grant total of four hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and seven cents with ten percent required county match of forty thousand, three hundred, thirty-five dollars and fifty cents be funded as follows. Thirty-four thousand from funds held in the grant account, and six thousand, thirty-five dollars and fifty cents from contingency. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Now, you said these were the same radios that the sheriff's department has?
Yes.
Which are the same radios that we're having trouble with?
No, this would be the need radios that were purchased from the JAG grant. And I think, but recently y'all put those in the service. Not the fleet top.
Yeah, they've not been, been in service yet, but that's the ones that you voted to, to turn on for the sheriff's office back about a couple of weeks ago.
All right, so, so we don't know how those radios are doing yet, because they're not in service.
They, they are not in service yet. However, it will take, it takes about a year before we even hear back from this grant. So you can always turn the grant down if you decide to do it for correction.
Yeah, the sheriff's department gets them up going and...
They're going to cry out?
Solve the problem, yeah.
Okay.
But this hopefully is going to solve problems. We did a communication study. It's been...
About three years ago.
Three years ago, and this is what they told us should, or recommended that we do is go with a digital P-point-five compliant system.
So this is going to improve our communication countywide?
Yes.
It's supposed to. We can get all the radios in place.
We got some weak spots in, in Kansas, we don't know.
Yes. That's why we've been trying for this grant the past couple of years and have, have this success. We, uh, hopefully we'll read this through.
Well, I appreciate your persistence in trying to guess to where we need to be.
Twenty-first century.
Twenty-first century. We're fifth of the way through the twenty-first century. We're still trying to get there, but hold on.
I call for a vote. District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I advise chairman vote yes. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. T.O. This is coming from Solid Waste Department. Mr. Shumpert, Jacob Shumpert is not able to be present tonight to request to fill a vacant position in the Solid Waste Department. He can't come because he's working. We have a man out, so he had to stay on the job. That's the reason he's not here tonight. They shorted some people in that department, so Jacob is out there in a convenience center somewhere. I make a motion to fill a regular attendance position in the Solid Waste Department. Do I have a second? Discussion.
Now, again, this is replacing, uh...
Is already, is this already fun?
Position that's already in place that we're just trying to...
Yes.
We're not creating, I just want to be clear that we're not creating a position. All right, okay.
We just had a decision. I call for a vote. District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And I advise chairman vote yes. I will entertain a motion for the council to go into a debate session pursuant to section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two of the South Carolina Codes of Law. Nineteen seventy-six has amended to discuss the ONSA contract to receive legal advice on a res... as amended to discuss the own-saw contract to receive legal advice on a resolution in relation to South Carolina opiate case.
Opium.
Opium to return to the call of the vice chair. Do I have a motion?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. I call for a vote. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And I advise chairman vote yes.